I'm happy to see you.
I learned that it was my fault because the pitch was bad.
Yup.
But nobody ever told me that. I learned to feel fashion way. By falling.
Yeah.
Well hello sir. You say hello. You say hello.
Can I raise hand with duty pleasurable allegiance, please?
He's trying so hard.
Pleasurable allegiance to the flag.
I'm the states of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
I'm just gonna do the.
Art.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Dear Lord be in our presence as we gather here tonight. Let us think with clear minds and think what is best for the village. Let us go forth from here knowing that we have done good for all those concerned. In Jesus name I ask amen.
Amen. Thank you. Good evening everyone. Okay. First thing on the agenda is public input. If someone here would like to say something, just please state your name and address.
Oh yeah. Denise Webler, I live at One Guild Avenue.
Okay. You got the floor.
Alright, I'm here about my, or my driveway. They were there, I don't know, a month ago, putting in new, like drainage. They ripped up the ends of the driveways. And my husband had spoke to Butch and asked him, there's a section that was ripped up from the excavator. And he took pictures, I have lots of pictures to show. Of where, you can see exactly where the excavator was, where it ripped it up. Now, mind you, we cold patched our driveway last year. That section was not ripped out. It was fine, there was nothing wrong with it. My husband asked Butch, you know, is that something you can replace? Because you're replacing the whole end of the driveway anyway. It's a patch about this big. He told him, nope, it was already that way beforehand. It was not. So, we are asking to have that small section also patched up, probably through the end of our driveway. And like I said, I have plenty of pictures to show. And shows where the excavator was, and you can see exactly where it dug it out. Is that something you wanna say?
I don't, I don't want to say.
Yeah. Okay, so, if you go this way, you'll see where it was. Where it ripped up. On the driveway, where the excavator was. You can see it far away, still up on our driveway, doing all the work. See the line where it dug it out? And it's been circling it. And then, that's the patch now, because now we have gravel in it.
Was that in the driveway or in the street?
My driveway.
That's the driveway.
So, you wanna show anybody? Also, what you wanna say, that, you know, being a resident of the village, for most of my adult life, I have never once complained about anything to be replaced or done. Never once had to attend a meeting, I've never had any issues. But we feel that something like this, with a small, since they're gonna do the, the end of the driveway anyway, it really wouldn't take much more to replace a small patch.
The crew saw cut the driveways before they dug out the blacktop, it was here too.
Say it again, when you said the.
They used a saw, a tracer saw, and they cut the blacktop, so it was a defined cut.
Yeah, 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 alright.
So it didn't like rip up more than what would have normally been ripped up. I mean, I haven't seen it personally, but I feel like if it inadvertently caused damage to the end of the driveway, we should probably fix it. Well, I. I told Tori, when I talked to him that day, that we would just feather in, because that spot is a big area that was, I mean, bad. And they did have coal patch in there. And like I said, they saw cut the driveway, went through there, put the pipe in, put gravel in. We're hoping to blacktop this week, hopefully, to repair all that stuff. And we would feather over, just not the, the edge. We'd feather over into that spot, but I'm not doing that. That whole section. I mean, there's a lot of driveway there.
The white dotted line is where, where they cut? I don't know what I'm looking at.
So, no, that's just an old part of the driveway.
Where, where they cut, just gravel, it's all gravel, right Butch?
Yup.
There's gravel now. There was one, it's just one section that was cut of the patched driveway. Just one section. We weren't asking for the whole driveway bottom of the driveway to be redone.
Yeah, well, like you said.
Yeah, we're just asking for that one part where it cut it off.
Yeah, where the gravel is.
Yeah. No, that's the end of the driveway. And it's that square that my husband put chalk around to show.
It's right, right above the edge of the cut. That's why I said we would just feather it in.
Well, if you feather it, is it gonna cover it?
It'll cover some of it.
Yeah, the whole section, if you have gravel, then you're gonna pave over that.
Right, correct. You got hers.
And then you'll match it up to the driveway.
Right.
I mean, if we pave like three or four feet beyond where their cutout is, it will feather it in much.
If it goes three or four feet, yeah, it would definitely cover that. And that's all, we're only asking for that section. Because we were gonna fix all the rest that we had to do before the winter. Because I don't want any gravel or loose rock. I have a new snow blower, in case we need it, you know.
And you just could feather it back into the.
Yeah, we're gonna dig out the trench, which is about that wide from the bucket. And then we fill that trench in, and we'll just feather it. So it won't be a sharp edge.
Feathering it, or patching that spot?
Feathering it, just like your coal patch you had there.
We walk, if it covers that spot, that's all we care about.
Right, so I can cover the whole spot, but it's gonna cover a lot right near that area. Cause your driveway's got a lot of bad spots in it.
But we're talking about this, I'm only talking about the spot.
The front part.
Right.
The front part.
Right, yeah.
Where, where my husband chalked it out. That square. That's what we want covered. We're gonna fix the rest again. That was, you know, which actually isn't a lot.
No, it's not, but we do it for you, then everybody else, I'll assume.
Yeah, but, the equipment actually also did it, so.
I mean, we did.
I mean, we have pictures of it, I didn't, I didn't.
I mean, it's a rubber track motor.
Yeah, it was a mini excavator. It was a rubber tank mini excavator.
Yeah.
Well, as you, but then you can see though, then whatever they dug out, they dug it out in the driveway, because it's cut right out in my driveway. Not on the end.
No, they cut your driveway for the pipe, it goes on your driveway.
Right, that's, that's what we're talking about.
That's what we're fixing.
That's what we gotta fix.
Okay. He said he asked you, and you told him that.
No, he wanted me to go past that spot.
Well.
Okay, so if he's gonna go up that, then we're all the same.
As is that spot, because, I mean, my husband, he's not a liar. He's a very honest guy. And, uh, he says specifically.
Maybe, maybe, I'm just misunderstanding.
We're digging out the gravel, so far down, we're gonna put two layers of, we're gonna be binder and blacktop. Where we dug. In front of Ray's driveway, and your driveway, and Tony's driveway. That's the plan. And I told him that.
Right, but not, we're not talking about just the very end.
No, I'm talking about where we dug.
Okay.
Where they dug out.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so we're good then.
That trench where you see the gravel?
That makes sense, we're good.
The trench where the gravel is, that's what's gonna be blacktop.
Okay.
They should all be so happy, I'm good. We're all good.
If that's it.
Then we're good, okay.
Okay, thank you very much, I can leave?
You can leave it, no, put the cuffs on, you stay, no, I'm kidding you, go ahead, thank you.
I was gonna leave with him anyway, no, thank you.
You got the police here, you're protected. Thank you. Alright, number two. Payment of the, of the abstracts, everyone's had a chance to take a look at them, I need a motion?
Motion to approve David, the abstracts.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Pose, carry. Bill Engineering, Bill Brown, excuse me.
Who's to ask for it tonight?
Oh, sure.
I haven't done that in a long time.
I had just one sheet of paper, you know, your whole file.
Go ahead, go.
I and I study, I've actually been talking about that for a while.
Okay.
You know, gone back and forth. We are looking to do a repair of a small segment at the lower end of Liberty Street. Behind a couple of the, which is the Chinese restaurant, there's a length of eight inch main that comes over from there. And then, another length that comes up Liberty Street and ties into the front line. So it's about two hundred lineal feet. They pop manholes there, and at a time when it didn't look like any of the buildings were occupied, you would expect there to be no water running through the pipe. There was probably ten gallons of minnow water running through the pipe.
Wow.
So, Liberty Street? On the very lower edge of Liberty. So.
It's been lit that way for many years.
I guess the only way to find out after repair, how, how, how effective it is, that the plant should be able to tell you how much is coming in, right?
Yeah, to watch it, some of the plant, I mean, and also pop, pop manholes and, once, once the repair.
Well, I mean, you have, I'm just curious, how much flow is gonna actually stop when you do this?
Right.
The way you're saying it, it should be considerably.
Yeah, I mean, ten gallons a minute over twenty-four hours is, you know, thousands of gallons. So, it's, it, you know, there's, there's no absolute smoking gun.
No, no, I, I got, okay.
This was a kinda paying for the buck approach, and the repair is, the company that did the inspections earlier this spring, Arrow Companies out of the Kingston area. We reached out to them and a couple other contractors, they were the only one that were willing to come for kind of that scale of project. So the, the work would be to put a liner through those two segments of the sewer. So they kinda drag a sock, for lack of a better term, through the pipe that has epoxy coating on it. And then they inflate it with air, so it takes the mold of the pipe. And then, the epoxy turns hard, and it's kind of a pipe within a pipe to seal leaking joints, so. We are asking the board to consider the proposal from Arrow Company, Arrow Construction Company, the amount of thirty-five thousand three hundred eighty-four dollars. The quote that is attached there, we asked for pricing for a couple of different things. Wanting to do the lining of the main line, and then also to line the laterals in that segment. Trying to stay within the budget that we had, you know, talked in the, in the range of forty thousand. Just the main line is what we were able to do, staying in that budget, to do the laterals. Would have basically doubled, doubled that and tried more than worth able to do in this current business leader, so.
Okay, we need a motion for that.
So this is within the budget that we discussed previously?
Yes.
Yeah, well, if I have one, we're gonna.
I make the motion to approve.
Second?
All favor?
Aye.
Pose, carry.
We're gonna, they love to do the work this fall. Be a couple, couple day operation.
This fall, this is right about now?
Yeah, before the end, yeah, before the end.
Before the end, before the snow falls?
Well.
Well, okay, you don't know about that.
It was a week ago.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We'll get a schedule and coordinate with D E P. Probably have to shut down the end of Liberty Street, you know, while, while they're in the streets, there'll be some traffic control things to work through. The other item, kinda going back a ways, repairs in the Seabody Building and the wastewater treatment plant. We talked a number of years on different options. And had bid out a project to replace the plug valves that are in the Seabody Building. The cost came in at a fair amount more than what was in the allocated budget by D E P. So, we went back to D E P with, with cedar wood to present, you know, what the costs were today. And eight months later, we have an approval from D E P to proceed with that project. So we are asking the board to consider the bid from S and H Mechanical for valve replacements at the wastewater treatment plant for the amount of two hundred and twelve thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars. It is three thousand more than it was in January. Prices actually went up by about six thousand in materials.
Is D E P's paying for this?
D E P's, they did pay the whole thing?
Yeah, it's a hundred percent, cause it's in the Seabody Building.
Can you need a motion for that?
Motion.
Second?
All favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Carry. So, we'll coordinate with the cedar wood and get that moving forward. The other couple items there, just kinda updates, the water project, we're coordinating with Rutledge Excavating. The bulk of the work is gonna take place next spring. And then Currywell, Frywell Drilling, or the Penn Buffalo Way. They had installed the test well earlier this summer, and they're gonna be scheduled to be here, I believe the third week October to put the.
Screen, they got the screen?
Yeah, they had, they had, I don't know, four or five monthly time or something.
Yeah.
But anyway, we have the screen, coordinating with Sterling Environmental, who's the hydrogeologist that we're working with on the project. There was a lot of silt in that area, so it's a screen made just for that site. So there's an area where the screen blinded off so that silt can't get in, and then above and below it is a screen where the water can get in.
Once they put it in, then we'll test it again to make sure everything is.
They run what we call a part five analysis, which is every constituent that the health department wants to be tested for, which is two or three hundred different parameters. From a quality standpoint, to make sure it's what we expect it to be, and meets all the health department rules and regulations. And then we also monitor the flows, it's a seventy-two hour pump test, so it'll be the generator and a truck, and they'll be running the well for seventy-two hours to make sure that, that there's the capacity.
Now, this well is gonna be similar to what we had before, they had the flow.
Yeah, we're, we're.
Cause I know we, we had slowed down quite a lot, so.
Right, the, the, the capacity of the, you know, the current one, you know, started at in the range of five hundred, and now we're two hundred.
Yeah.
And it's cost a lot to me.
And this one is going to be?
In the range of four to five hundred.
Okay, great, so we're closer, okay, got it.
That's, that's the well. So, yeah, hopefully at the next board meeting, we have a further update on that, on some of the preliminary water quality tests. Once that pans out and we pass all our tests, then we do our permitting with the health department and River Basin Commission, and get the data.
By the end of the year?
Spring.
I know, I know, I'm sorry. Okay.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thanks Bill.
Thank you both. Shay?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Everybody get my report?
Yes.
Anybody have any questions? We're not allowed to ask.
See if you two shot me or something.
No, I don't have any requests, so.
No?
No request.
Thank you.
That's good. That's it.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Butch?
Everyone's.
Good evening.
Everyone got their board?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Butch.
Sure.
Prayers, concerns, wishes?
God wishes, they can come true.
No, I don't know. At least you got the blacktop done.
East street looks good, except now people drive too fast.
Yup, yup.
Yeah, you guys have been busy this week.
Yup, the blacktop usually ties up some pain.
No, it's good, all looks good. Water street's good and.
Start getting ready for the unfortunate events coming this way.
Yeah.
I'm enjoying the water street blacktop, you know, before the drive.
I'm sure it's a speedy short.
The speed, I was just gonna say, the speed cars are enjoying it too.
It was pretty bad when they had it, no, it was bad enough. I only got a couple of items to discuss. Permission for John Hoff and myself to attend a water conference in Sydney for water license renewal credits.
Big motion for that?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose.
And the second thing is permission for Joey to put something in favor recently, vacant spot.
Does everybody know about that?
Yeah.
Yup.
Everybody know about that.
Probably, probably not gonna be easy trying to find, you know, C D L driver, he can also have a water license, so.
What does it take to get a water license?
Uh, you gotta go to a class, usually it's like two or three day event at Morrisville College, the last I knew. Cause they changed how you get those licenses.
I know. You said you had some potential candidates to take the water class.
Yeah, I knew that, two guys are interested in you.
Does it do a training course, anything for Joey?
For the Sydney one, he pays like three, five dollars each.
Okay. You know. So make a motion if we post the vacancy?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Right, pose.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Joe, Josh?
Hello.
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 Not much action. You gotta get my report. Any questions, anything?
No, looks like you're busy as usual.
Should die down here soon, hopefully.
Oh yeah, it's gonna snow come before I say that.
Right, right. Anything for me though? Nothing.
No.
What are you gonna do when it dies down?
Work on fire safety inspections.
We need a few of that.
Yup, yup.
You know, a lot of things you put in order and everything, right? I think it, the whole way to do that.
It's gonna be a long turnaround, I started that when I first started here, and.
Yeah.
Yup.
Just, keep a good record of it, and then.
Yup, and then trying to work on some blight properties as well slowly, and whenever I get free time.
Yeah.
Blight, did you say blight?
Blight, yeah.
Being nice to sir.
Yup. Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Yup.
Do you know how many vacant, vacant blighted homes we have in the village that still get their taxes paid roughly?
A lot of them.
There's a lot of them, but recently, a lot of them have been purchased.
Yeah, there's a lot of, I've been seeing a lot of them purchased.
I mean, they're in such sad shape, but some paying the damn tax bill.
Right, right. Um, also, Jody pointed out, there is a thing in Nikon, there is an article about tackling these properties. And actually taking title of them, because nothing happens with them. So, I'll do some more research, and hear some of you guys with something.
Thank you.
Still have a pile of a house on Shepherd, Shepherd Street.
Uh, I made contact with them. It's moving forward. Yup.
Chief?
Wow, at least that was right, yes sir.
Yup, we're done.
The only thing that early had was the email that we got for a crosswalk. Issue. I've got the printout of that. Facebook.
Yeah.
Go ahead, you reference. No, I got you, you're what? So, on the crosswalk, especially like during fair time, that's usually when, obviously, it's the biggest issue is at night, whenever he's trying to cross either the west side or the east side of the bridge. The crosswalk now at the east side of the bridge is where, where we cross. Crossing guard comes out, she should be stopping traffic always. There's been discussions about that too, that we're stopping traffic always, but once the kids are in a crosswalk, there shouldn't really be any traffic. But we, the only exception we do is on Delaware Street where we're crossing, where we have six lanes of traffic, four different directions. So. I don't have an issue if the kids, like, wanna cross to the west side of the bridge, so they can go down, so they're not crossing through the bridge. I, I don't know if we could put a crosswalk. I don't know, the only thing.
DOT.
So the DOT thing, but then also you're, you're, so like they put one there in the bridge, but it never went across, and I don't know if it's because you're, you may not have a little parking lot. A private parking lot.
Yeah. Wouldn't it be, that's, that's Stockton Avenue on the west side, it's not a highway.
But you're crossing, but what, what you're saying, you're crossing from, it's a private parking lot, yeah.
You're going in, you're not going to a sidewalk, you're going into a private park.
Yeah, there's no sidewalk there. It's just private park.
But you can't, I printed out a text map, just to show, I mean, the existing lot ties into an adjoining sidewalk. The big walk goes into the sidewalk.
Right, so I guess the, I guess the argument could be made that you could bring the sidewalk that comes in front of the castle, and goes past Gipper's. Even though there's not an actual physical sidewalk there, there's, right?
Yeah, there's nothing there.
No, there's no sidewalk, but it's almost like a continuation through there, I don't know if there's an easement or.
Yeah. You have to, especially putting in their parking lot, cause that knows a different plow hazard, you know, when they call their parking lot the D four. So then how they park in that parking lot too is, I mean, when they got their air slot there, you would.
Right, I think, I think the other concern is that the other side of the bridge, when the kids are on that west side of the bridge, and they're coming up. To go to Ballard General, or to Maltol, or wherever they're going off from that bridge, there's not really a curb that extends around there, right?
Which.
So you're coming up the bridge, and then when the kids come off the bridge and they go, fade to left right out the bridge.
Oh, to go like down to Water Street. Right, yeah.
There's not really a curb that goes around there to get them off onto the.
No, it comes, it's.
Stops.
Road's going down there.
Yeah, maybe there's a crosswalk.
Yeah, so when you're coming, when you're coming up Water Street towards Bridge Street, your vehicle's here, and the bridge, it's, it's pretty close there too. So you're still gonna have possibility of.
Possible, yeah, you know.
There's, there's a belly there, it's really bad.
It is, when you pull out to try to look both ways, it's, it's difficult, cause the cars coming.
There isn't an easy solution, the curb that is.
Well, the easiest solution is what we have, there's one crosswalk.
Right, it is.
At that location, and that's where everyone has to cross.
I mean, I, I know the kid, I, I don't, it's human nature, I wouldn't wanna do it either, I don't wanna walk past the place where I'm going, just to cross and walk back up. But if they, if the kids stay on the same path that they're going, and they go all the way to the end, they can cross in the front of Bridge Street.
Right, at the corner.
Go towards Wayne Bank.
Right.
And they can come back up the sidewalk and go to access or whatever.
Yeah, I think.
They, they can, but I, I kind of agree with the teachers here, in that they're, they're right, I'm in that traffic every day. Those kids get, get to the other side of the bridge, and they make a hard left right through all those lanes of traffic.
Yeah, I've seen it too, we've had accidents before in the past, you know, where they've come off the bridge and they've tried to act, you know, they wanna cross the bridge. And I don't have an issue if, if they want, that's why I was thinking if there was, we could put a crossing walk in here, that the way that the kids could visibly see, I can cross on this side of the street too. Because she's stopping traffic, whoever the crossing guard is, they're gonna stop traffic all three directions.
But I got that, though, i- if, if you put a crosswalk there, are you gonna have another crossing guard over there?
You wouldn't need that, you could cross.
You could cross them.
The, the problem I would have.
Okay, I'm just.
The problem I would have is at the end of the bridge, when you're coming off the bridge, it's, there's a lot of congestion right there for bringing a lot of kids onto that corner where there's no curb. I would find it just as equally dangerous to bring all those kids down that side of the street without having a proper access to come around the bridge. That, that's really my biggest hangover.
So they do, they do have on that side, Stockton Avenue side of the bridge. That's why they had the, the crosswalk, the ADA mat on the right hand side you wanna cross. So you actually crossed the bridge on Bridge Street, then you went across Stockton Avenue. So they had an ADA mat here on this side in the corner, then on this corner.
Okay.
And they had tapered, so you would actually, if you were going on the fair side of the bridge.
I see.
You would cross over to the other side of the bridge, over to the school, or to get across Stockton Avenue.
Okay.
But nobody uses it. And it is there, nobody replacing all that, cause the, the ADA mat has actually been tore up over the course of.
It's not even there, is it?
Huh?
It's not even there.
They're not on either side at all. Yeah, they got ripped up.
No, I don't know if that's part of what the state can replace.
Yeah, they're, they're working on it, yes.
I mean, my team to your street.
Right, yeah.
Yup.
Um, so that, I mean, I, I don't know, that's. Could, could you do a crosswalk and cross the face of the bridge then?
Yeah, that's all they, that's all they had, they just never painted lines across it, but they did the ADA mat to go from this side of the bridge to the side of the bridge.
So I mean, that would, that would, that's on the, that's on the south end of the bridge? Right, that would cure that problem.
I would think.
Right. This, um, what the teachers were saying, as far as that goes, the, the problem's still gonna lie though, where you come out the end of the bridge, though, there's really not a lot of access. Lot of room for the kids to come off that bridge, when you have traffic coming out from Water Street. Lot of times, they hit the stop sign, sometimes they stop, sometimes they don't, sometimes they creep out, or go too far, you know, that's, so.
Another.
I mean, it's something to think about when we're.
I've been talking to Melissa this week about it, and another suggestion she thought of was, the elementary school kids get out twenty minutes or so earlier than the middle school kids do. And by the time the middle school kids are coming across the bridge, the elementary school kids are, are gone, they're home, they're not, they're not crossing at the same time.
Okay.
So they thought that Timmy could use the current crosswalk that we, we always use on, on Delaware Street for the elementary school kids. And then, twenty minutes later, so when the middle school kids could start coming, if we're, if we're crossing kids over to that side, then he could use that, use the other crosswalk to, to cross them across Bridge Street.
So you're still gonna have kids going, so, I'm sorry Nate, so where, where's, where's Timmy gonna be then, where's?
With the by town issue you're talking about, he'll be in front of the bank?
He'd be here. For the, when the, when the, when, when they come, if they're, they cross over to the, the west side of the. For the, when the, when the, when, when they come, if they're, they cross over to the, the west side of the bridge and you come up this way, then Timmy would move over and, and there's a crosswalk right there as well.
The, the problem is, the, the problem is, Timmy has to be in the middle, should be in the middle of the intersection. So, if you move him around.
So he can do either one then?
And he does, as far as I know, either, however the kids need to cross, if they need to come down one way and cross that way, or if they need to, you know, cross in front of the bridge or they need to go.
I, I, I've seen him doing that, I've seen him stand in the middle and, I go, most every day now, I've been out there like.
You can't.
Three o'clock, I've been looking at him and, and he does get in the middle and they can cross both ways.
You can't, you can't move the crossing guard around the corner like, like she had suggested, because then the cars are gonna come off from Bridge Street and they're gonna make the left on to Delaware and then all of a sudden there's gonna be a crossing guard right there, so that's, that's gonna be a dangerous situation, that's why they gotta be in the middle of the crosswalk. And at the other end of the bridge, she's only dealing with three lanes of traffic, one very small lane coming off in Stockton Avenue that's not considered two oh six or ten, actually Stockton Avenue from South Street, that section I'm talking about.
Yeah, I'm, I love the idea that we just talked about, about putting in a crosswalk to cross Bridge Street on the south end.
Again, there's no problem, I don't have an issue with that, the problem I'm gonna see is that at the other end of the bridge, when all those kids start coming off and they're going to that.
Yeah, coming out of Water Street.
Coming out of Water Street, that, that would need to be addressed.
Whereas there's a crosswalk there, just, uh, it's not regulated basically, you know, you, you don't have any way there, so that's when the traffic keeps coming out. But there is a crosswalk there on Water Street.
Yeah, I didn't know if there was something that, you know, and again, I don't know with whatever, but just, uh, we actually have a lot of way, you know, a curb to protect, so that the cars know that they only can go so close to the bridge, because they're pretty tight, that, that was my only thought of this whole thing.
Well, you have to end up stopping twice, once for the crosswalk and then once for traffic, because if you stop for the crosswalk, you can't see the traffic.
You'll be a little bit, can't see all the traffic, yeah.
And then the ADA compliance rules for coming off the bridge, that's why it's just slow through the curb there.
Okay.
Concern is too, is encouraging pedestrian traffic into Water Street that doesn't have sidewalks, it's a busy area.
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna go anyways.
Right.
Yeah, they're gonna go anyways.
Right.
You know, that said, but the biggest thing to get them in there, once they're visible, it, it's, it, it lightens it up a little bit where it's just that corner coming off the bridge and going in there is.
The state's working on that too, Joe, I'm not sure what they're gonna do there, but that's another one they're working on.
Okay.
All of their crosswalks within the village are redoing.
Okay.
So we'll see how.
Maybe, maybe that's something we can look forward and see if they, you know, when they are doing that or something, they can look at something like that where they can. Because there's really no room for, uh, pedestrian to come off that bridge and, and access Water Street.
Yeah.
You know, the cars are like right there.
Well, we do have, I mean, there's a stop sign there and some people actually know it's there.
Right.
The other thing we have is, and I don't think we have used it, was the, the solar crosswalk signs.
Yep. I'd love to get some of those.
We've got them.
We have some.
We've had them.
We're, Sydney, we got those too from the Village of Sydney, remember?
Yeah.
There's all you put up on.
There's our crosswalk signs with flash lights and everything.
So we could put that down by the, that's the bridge right there. That would, that'd be where you'd put it?
It's a hilly street, though.
Down by Water Street, you mean?
Potentially. Yeah, but while you gotta look at the sidewalk on the bank side too, see if you have room for your talk in the base.
Yeah, I don't know what base is, the other side of the street belongs to the town.
Right.
They would go nice up on Stockton Avenue, everybody wants to do seventy through that crosswalk, the new one, at least it'd be lit, you know?
We can't see that either.
Oh, and then there's, speak on traffic patterns and stuff, there's one more thing too, and Josh, it has something to do with, uh, bringing that to light is the family dollar.
Yes.
There's the new one-way street signs out there, um, still researching some things as far as like, you know, holding people accountable for it, I guess, so to speak, but, um.
It's private property, it's tough, right?
Yeah, it's tough when you're coming off, but I think you're accessing a, a public highway to a public street, so, um, but it, it is only in, it's not supposed to be accessing Delaware Street from that parking lot anymore. It's supposed to go out the backside to Water Street and then go down Water Street. Um, I've seen a lot more complaints lately than I did last month.
I go park there for a while too.
Yeah.
And I, and I see people coming down and they see my car and they see me and then they go, whoops, and they take me to U-turn and go back down where they, where they.
Yeah, I, I've seen, that said though, I've also been monitoring that a little bit too and, and I've seen, I've seen a lot more traffic going off Water Street.
Yep.
And, but it's bringing a lot more traffic on Water Street too, so.
And they placed those signs, right, the, the family doll, dollar.
Yeah, I think there's those.
The man, the manager didn't even know what was going on, it was the, the main office that did it.
She doesn't really pay attention to anything.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, so that was original DOT approval.
That was written before that came in, that was one of the agreements they made, I remember when they first came.
I'd like, I'd like, I, I don't know if we can maybe make the sign bigger.
I can reach out to the company and see if, uh, they can actually do some signage on their existing sign.
Yeah.
Um, the original signage used to be on a building that was right there and when that was torn down, they, and they just never kept up with the arrows and the parking lot.
On the parking lot, alright.
Yep.
Yeah, because when they make that turn, you see that little sign right there, a lot of them will catch it right away.
The concept came up with Dunkin' Donuts, because it's gonna create a.
Yeah, there's gonna be a lot of, yeah.
So they just need to get corrected.
People are driving over curbs to, to do that, because it's only, it's only one car wide.
Right.
Yeah.
And then they drive over.
Well, yeah, if you're counting the parking lanes, right, because there you're talking.
There's only one more, twenty-one lane, I think too, but a lot of them just make you stick over the curb.
Right.
I'll reach out to the company.
Yeah, I think it'd be better if we had like a bigger one-way sign there that people would actually notice maybe.
Oh, people have noticed it because they complained.
Right, well, yeah, and, and, and again, I've seen.
They thought Joe was just out to get them.
Right. But, like I said, I've seen a lot more complaints this past month than when it first went off.
Yeah.
When we first talked about it.
Yeah, I was there today for like twenty minutes and I seen like maybe fifteen cars, about four or five of them just went through here.
Yeah.
The others saw me and they went, they turned around, so it is going, but better than it was, before it was like a steady flow, and holy crap. I don't think she's a sign, but they are, the word is getting around.
Well, I hope you said together, maybe we're sitting on the inside of the street. Yeah.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll keep looking into this a little bit more, um, but as far as the crossing guards moving off from their posts and around to a different spot, it's, it's gonna be more dangerous now that they're looking for everybody in the crosswalk. Motorists aren't gonna see them coming around the corner like that. So, I'll make sure, um, this week I'll check in with them and make sure they're positioned where there's, where they're supposed to be and where they should be.
Yeah, I never understood why they put the actual crosswalk way back here, these are the cutouts there actually.
Right.
And they are there.
Right.
It never made much sense that you don't see, this far back.
That's, that's where, that's where they cross, right there. Right, I, I'm. Can I see that?
The image is a little off.
No, but I get, but so.
They, they did, they were crossing the cutout.
So like, if you're looking here, right, this is kind of like a, it's a sidewalk, I'm not really a sidewalk, it runs around this, you know, the.
Yep. Right there.
Yeah.
That's when they put in, after when they redid this last time, they put that one in, which made this individual very upset.
Okay.
Um, so they put that one there, you had to cross over there, but it's definitely not in alignment with what.
Right, but even, so I guess my question would be, is this considered a sidewalk here, this, that part, you know, where it slopes down a little bit?
It probably is, yeah.
So, so then in, in theory, we could put a crosswalk on this side.
Yeah, you have to look at it, see if, yeah.
And then she can, she can, she can monitor both those crosswalks, it's not.
Yeah, and, well, it happened originally, when he put this one down here.
Okay.
He had to take it down, clean this along.
I see, okay.
So we turned into a deal.
Yeah, that would be, you know, since we're looking at it, if this would be, you know, if this is considered a sidewalk here, it goes around the front, that kind of like skirts that driveway. You could put the crosswalk there and then the kids would actually be able to visi- visibly see, I'm on the side of the bridge. Again, we saw the problem at the other end of the bridge, so it's gonna be the biggest issue, I think, with the traffic.
It's tied to air slot. And there were, you know, when students would, this is really a place for people to queue to cross.
Right.
At this section.
Yeah.
Just a physical adjustment, everybody to.
Yeah, yeah.
That's it, that's it, that's the last thing I don't, that's be done this week?
Yeah.
And how about, um, oh god, I can't think of his name, I'm sorry, guy that we have working out, what kind of, from the academy?
Still, he's working, he's been working his way to.
Okay.
I've seen your stack of papers.
Yeah, yeah.
So when do you think you can cut him loose a little bit?
Probably end of the month.
Before you get all the paperwork and everything done.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, anybody?
Nope.
Thank you, chief.
Anything around or?
No.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to trustee reports, we'll start with Nate tonight. Give Steve a break.
I have nothing to record.
Why? Just be there.
The, uh, the theater's gonna get a new sound system for the live, for the live events, so that's nice, what we, what they've got in there now is, uh, quite old. So they're, they're gonna get a new sound system for the live events, for the theater, they already have the, you know, state of the art Dolby surround sound, they got, got that a few years back. So that's very cool, uh, Don Gilkinson is helping us out with that. And then, uh, uh, currently playing at the theater, we have Paw Patrol, The Mighty Movie, go see it if you haven't seen it yet. Uh, we, we have an event coming up, uh, this month, Art in the Parlor, Patchwork Landscape, and that is this Saturday, October seventh. Uh, and it's gonna go on through November fifth. And they are paintings by Gigi Stankowitz. And, uh, there's gonna be an opening reception, opening reception and artist talk on October seventh from four to six P M. And it's gonna be available on, uh, uh, Walton's First Friday. And, uh, it's, it's gonna be available for viewing on Saturdays from four to six P M and by appointment. Uh, Patchwork Landscape is an exhibit of paintings inspired by the plants and fungi discovered by the artist Gigi Stankowitz throughout a year of hiking and foraging in Delaware County, New York. These watercolors highlight the shapes, textures and patterns of the wild plants and fungi native to this landscape. They are a close-up visual conversation with the local environment and how it changes through the seasons. So that's a nice thing we have going on at the theater. Uh, they have a Coffee House concert coming up this, this month, it's a free concert, and that is on Sunday, October twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, from six to eight P M. And that is Steve Eisenberg with guests Michael, Michael Mc- McWayne and Bill Senschel. And they're gonna be playing Irish blues, vaudeville and more, so that's fun, that, that's another fun thing coming up at the theater. Uh, they have their first main stage concert of the year at the theater this year. Uh, it's gonna be Music on the Delaware Presents Fenimore Chamber Orchestra Wins, which will be on Sunday, October fifteenth from two to four P M. And that's a twelve-piece ensemble known for providing an extraordinary musical experience. And it's gonna be a great show, everyone should come out. The, uh, parks are in full swing for fall, we've got football practice and football games and field hockey and soccer. There are a lot of people down there every day, so again, please be very careful when you're driving down into Austin Lincoln Park, there are a lot of kids there and everyone's having a lot of fun.
What time does the pool close?
Next year. The pool is done for the summer. And that, that is all I have, sir.
Thank you.
Nothing today. I have nothing. I have nothing.
Three zero, wow, wow. Alright, um, one thing, I have a couple things, I'll try and do real quick. One is, we, we're putting in a request to the town to get money, to help, like they always do every year. I did an original letter here for, of asking thirty-five thousand from the town to give us the help with the, the pool and the recreation and everything like that. Hope people do have any permission, or if you wanna give ask for more or whatever.
Oh, more.
And just for reference folks, the park's budget is about a hundred and eighty thousand.
Yeah, right.
I'm just letting everybody else know.
What are we getting now, uh, thirty?
If land government, you need to sure to tell me that.
The pool budget is around sixty thousand and the full park's budget is around a hundred and eighty.
Yeah, we got about twenty-two already now.
Thirty-two.
Thirty, I'm sorry, thirty, excuse me.
We appreciate what we get, we'd certainly love more.
Well, I, I went up and explained to them that, I showed them the bills that, how much it costs and everything. They, they saw it, they, and they knew, they know how much it costs, so.
Well, it'd be nice if they had a little extra, they could kick it around.
Yeah, well, now's the time to do it, because they're fucking budgeted.
Yeah, I have the letter.
I make a motion.
Motion to increase?
Yeah, thirty-five.
Ask for an increase to thirty-five thousand.
Make it forty or is that?
Don't push that, let's see if we get that for us.
Ask for an increase to at least thirty-five thousand.
If we asked for forty, we wouldn't have the giant emergency we had with the lifeguards this year. I mean.
Right, I mean, our budget's gonna come up again next year and.
Yeah.
So.
So Dick has a motion for thirty-five?
Okay.
Is there a second on that? So thirty-five?
I'd say at least thirty-five.
Well, well, is that, is there a second on the thirty-five?
A second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The, uh, next thing is, I, you gave this to everybody, right? About the website?
I can't remember, because it was back a while ago, so, in August, I don't remember if.
Did anybody see anything about the Delco, the, the one on the website, the, how I, I updated?
The platform or something.
The platform, the platform.
Or outdated or something, I don't know.
I haven't looked at it recently.
Not, not the, no, it makes it.
Delco, I don't know.
You know what I'm talking about, right?
I know what you're doing, yeah.
Huh?
The, the Delaware County website, or I don't know what you're talking about.
It's a company that does, uh, updates the platform and all, right?
I guess, I don't understand it, so.
Have you, anybody had a chance to look at this, or you didn't?
It's been a while, I'd have to take a look.
If you want time to look at it, we can wait until next month, then.
Yeah, let's look at it next.
Okay, I'll wait until next month, make sure, do you want to give everybody a copy, alright?
Is that a proposal to maintain the website?
Well, they're gonna update the platform and, 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 could, hasn't been done in quite a long time.
We're running out of space with our emails.
That's the problem.
Yeah, space and everything like that, so they could, I, I think that, when I looked at, I think the whole cost was like around twenty-five hundred or something like that, depending on what you're gonna do. But, once it was done, we would have all the space we need, we wouldn't run into a problem that we're running, and that would make it easier for you too as well.
So it would integrate in our existing.
Yeah. But, we can wait until next month and everybody get a chance to look at it, but put it on your agenda for next month, we'll take, alright, and look at it. Alright, uh, I'll give you the, see this right? Nothing else I have, alright, we have number six, the Veterans Day Parade, November eleventh. We had got a, a request from the, uh, the V F W, and the Lions Club has provided the insurance form, I've done that, so we just need a motion.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, close, carry. And the second thing is for the Christmas parade. Patty Wood in the chamber submitted the letter, the Lions Club again will, I have the insurance form, I made it up and gave it to Jody, so we're all set for that, which will be on November twenty-fifth.
Make a motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry. And last but not least, the budget amendments for twenty-three, twenty-four, I think you've all got a copy of them.
Yeah.
We just need a motion for that.
Motion to accept the budget amendments.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just to let you know, I had got a letter from a young girl, lady from, uh, Truensburg Elementary School, she's in the fourth grade. And part of her social studies program was to pick out someplace in the state of New York where they wanted to do, she went through the whole project, she picked Walton, Village of Walton.
Alright.
So, I got a whole bunch of stuff from her, from Walton, I went to the town, got information from them, I took a bunch of pictures, I put down all the businesses that we have. And I mailed it out to her today, so, I called the school, they were extremely happy. And I mailed it out to her today, so, I called the school, they were extremely happy, like, I think she's eight years old, nine years old, so. But Truensburg, I realized it's like two and a half hours away, I was surprised that, I sent to the school, what made, what made her pick Walton? She says, I don't know, but she said she definitely wanted to do Walton, I said, okay.
She's here at Walton.
I don't, probably somebody in her family was here, you never hear that.
She's eight?
Huh?
Eight, fourth grade?
Fourth grade, eight and nine, yeah, eight, yeah, she's in fourth grade. But she wrote me a letter in her handwriting and I, I, I thought it was great, so I, I spent the couple days getting information and I took pictures of every place I could, the theater and the library. I gave it to her so she could put it in her product, maybe make it a little bit easier for her.
She's clearly a very bright student.
Yeah, she is, she knows how to pick them.
That's good, thanks.
Maybe the paper could follow, huh?[1732.14]